Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. This is a public meeting. If any members of the public would like to speak to the board regarding this matter, at the pleasure of the board, which I'm sure you'll get, we'd be happy to hear your comments. To begin, I'm going to ask John Borders to make an introductory statement regarding the meeting.
This is an informational meeting and it's just a public hearing as the president said. But people that they can give you an overview of what's going to be happening as it sort of goes. It's going to come to you as a planned development. Although, what is probably the development, you know, may not. The Home Depot site and the Accadacity in the one door also came to its point of abundance. And what that means is, because this is in our one year, so there's one state for only one or two facilities allowed in seventy-five hundred. If you have at least four acres in that district, you can include what's called a planned development. And what that does is allows for mixed-use development on a longer scale, so that you can redo the whole holistic plan. Process is still the same. You'll still get the application. It'll come to me, I'll do the reports, I'll send them off to you. Do you want to go the whole layer reading? Send it to you for a recommendation and a major site plan, and then I'll go back to the ZBA once you make the recommendation. The difference with the planned development is that all relief and dimensional regulations are sent by a special permit by the ZBA. There will be no baronesses, it's all special permit. And they will set, they will decide the number of property spaces, etc. All of the dimension one of the regulations. Pass it over to Adam.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Abby White, I'm with the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance at the state. I'm the director of public private development there. And before Penrose gives their presentation this evening, I wanted to set the table a little bit about what the Commonwealth is up to on top of Powder Hill. So historically, as I'm sure you all know, the veterans' home campus has had both the Quigley Building, which is a long-term care facility, and nine domiciliary buildings, residences that are operated by the Commonwealth to provide housing and supportive services for our veterans. Both of those facilities are undergoing significant changes at the moment. So the Commonwealth is replacing the long-term, I want to try, the long-term care facility at the Quigley Building with a new community living center. And at the CLC, as we call it, we're proud to be delivering cutting-edge resiliency and sustainability features to meet the demands of a changing climate for years to come. The experience of our veterans' residents at the CLC will be enhanced by dignified private spaces, connections to nature, engaging common spaces, and incredible use. In its final condition, the residents of the community will benefit from the restored Blue Moon Park. And after residents transition to the new CLC, on the, of course, the left-hand side there, the Quigley Building will be removed and the site work in that area will continue into 2025. Over at the domiciliary campus, which Penrose is going to speak about in more detail this evening, we're really excited to be advancing the vision for the redevelopment of a historic and storied campus that ensures that all existing veteran residents will have access to high-quality housing and services while we continue to serve a changing veteran population. For this redevelopment, the Commonwealth has sought out a public-private partnership to renovate the buildings into affordable housing and to have that partner manage the housing and provide services to our residents. When D-CAM seeks out a redevelopment partner for a project like this, we look to have that partner engage in the municipal permitting process, so that's right here this evening. Together, these two projects, the CLC and the domiciliary redevelopment, will serve as a model for dignified housing, services, and long-term care that our veterans deserve. With that, I'll turn it over to Carmen, Charlie, and if you can take questions later.
Thanks, Abby. So today, we've brought everyone on the top row, or everyone stays here. So Charlie and myself are from Penrose. We're multifamily developers. We do this things on affordable housing across the nation. We've done this for fifty years. And we've done veterans housing also. And I have some pictures of some projects that we've done that serve in housing. We have our architecture team with us, Foli Sa, Ingrid, Albert Sweeney, our civil engineer, Bill Mauer, and our website architect, Carl L. Petrelli, Misha Crowley, and JP. In addition to the team that's here, some other folks that aren't here today is our historic consultant, because we're going to be doing this in alignment with the state Historic Preservation Office, Mass Historic Commission, as well as federal guidelines for historic rehabilitation. We have affiliated corporate management company, so in addition to us being developers, real owners, and operators, so our management company will be the ones that we're probably managing this for the long term. And then we also have a service partner, because we know that as a veterans' campus, we need to make sure we have a service provider that knows the veterans' community. And they operate a number of veteran affordable housing projects across the state. And they have already started meeting with residents in small groups to understand the needs and get to know the residents kind of on a more intimate basis. So this is our team. And our goal today, as John mentioned, is to kind of describe the project so that the board can become more familiar with it, or hoping to achieve here. So these are different projects that we've done across the nation, our veterans' housing for our veterans, New Jersey, as well as residents at Roosevelt Park in Edison, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, as well as Georgia. So we have experience with veterans' housing. And when we were actually interviewing for the RFP, we asked our members of our team, like, who has a family member that is, or themselves have served? And we realized that amongst our team ourselves, we all have connections with individualists that have served, that that's even more meaningful, that's why this conference is even more meaningful. So I want to start with our promise, and this is something that we have showed to the veterans. Every time we go to a town hall at the veterans' home, which is every two to three months, we tell them that our goal is committed to ensuring that all the residents have a place at the veterans' home, whether it be right now, during the redevelopment, after redevelopment. And I'm going to show a phasing plan. The reason why we are phasing this project and how we phase this is to ensure that there will be a place on the hill for them to live, even as we might be redeveloping certain buildings that are being vacant or being made vacant in order to the redevelopment. So we're not bringing redevelopment with when anyone's living in a building. So buildings will be vacant before we redevelop it. So these are our goals. These are our priorities, and this is what we're going to set to achieve here. So there will be a hundred percent veterans' preference within our site. We're going to, we're working now, starting to work now on service provision and meeting with veterans and understanding service needs or that a service provider. We're going to ensure that all existing residents stay on site, develop the redevelopment. We're going to renovate the existing domiciliary buildings, which don't, most of them don't have individual bathrooms and kitchens, into apartments, studios, one bedrooms, and some two bedrooms, that have individual living spaces, individual kitchens, and individual bathrooms. We also want to create a little bit more diverse unit mix, so that there can be opportunity for veteran families to have opportunity to live here. And we also want to create a one-stop-shop resource center on campus in what is known as the headquarters building, so that we can bring service providers, other service providers onsite, so that veterans don't necessarily have to always travel off-campus, off-the-hill, in order to access services. So I also wanted to give some context as to the meetings that we've had thus far. In March, we presented our plan to the Veterans' Home Board trustees, as well as the town hall, and we committed to going at least every quarter and more if there is a specific requirement. We met with the city council to present our proposed plan. We had a neighborhood meeting at the American Club in Kewell. And in order to have that meeting, we actually knocked on the doors in the neighborhood and dropped off flyers to, so that we can have a chance to hear any comments or concerns from the neighborhood. And then in June, we had a small meeting with city staff to show the proposed plans, and we started a small group meeting with residents at the home zones and everything. Now we're at the stage where we're going to work on getting zoning approval. And after zoning approval, our goal is to submit for funding from the state. The project is going to be financed through the Women's Housing Tax Credits, which is a state program through the Executive Office of Housing and Developmental Communities, used to be called DCP. And we also committed to the neighborhood that prior to construction start, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting, so that it's not like suddenly there are cold-woe or suddenly there are big trucks coming through and neighbors weren't aware that construction was going to start. So our goal is to phase this into all four phases, but to have each phase kind of overlap, so that we want to get to the finished product as soon as possible, so that our veterans are able to live in a construction site for longer than they need to be. So our goal is to start late next year and hopefully be done by 2029 within our campus. So this is a reminder as to the parcel that actually part of this, the planned development that we're putting in front of the planning board, it includes the parcel of where the nine domiciliary buildings are currently located, as well as this parcel on the more end, which is currently a parking lot. The chapel and the Quigley Building are not part of the project. And here, I just wanted to show an aerial, kind of as a before and after, to show that our goal, we are not proposing demolition of any of the domiciliary buildings, but only demolition that we're proposing. There's a one-story incinerator building between the sergeant and laundry, and then walkway, a metal walkway between headquarters and Kewell. So this is the current aerial, and this is the proposed and fully combined walkthrough of the architecture in a little bit more detail. But our goal is to store and rehabilitate all the nine domiciliary buildings. And I just want to highlight that our vision for this is to create a campus that is both kind of provides services and is a kind of exciting campus for our veterans to live in, but also to create more connections than needed, because it does feel like it's set atop of a hill and a little isolated. So, but in terms of amenities that we wanted to add to the site to make this a very attractive place for our veterans in the future is starting on Crest Avenue going down. On the left here, we're proposing a cafe and plaza area where the former, where the one-story incinerator building is. And we're hoping to find a veteran-run business to operate this cafe. Behind this cafe, we're going to create an accessible way to get to the back of these buildings to turn the current power plant, that right steam power key for the entire campus into a veteran's community art center. And then going down this avenue on this right is the Veteran Resource Center, which is the one-stop shop that I was mentioning for services. Going farther down, the Commandons is where we envision our management functions to sit, where our full-time property manager, property assistant, property manager, and staff will have operations there. And then next to it is Victory Garden, because we have heard, every time around campus, we see how much care the residents put into, there's kind of plantings inside, and there's a lot of interest in gardens, so there's a small greenhouse and some raised beds that we have at the Victory Gardens. And then he will probably talk about more of these courtyards and that creates green spaces that we're proposing. But one of the key things also is that we wanted to create an area where you particularly invite the neighbors to come, and this is, that's the intent of this community, the area, to encourage families to utilize spaces on campus. And then there are some task forces proposed in the current part of the onboard patch. So in our initial proposal for the headquarters building, this was kind of a preliminary floor plan for what we were envisioning for the Veteran Resource Center. And this will probably get reconfigured based on some of the comments that we got from residents as to what they're looking for. But the intent here was to have meeting rooms, so that if the VA officer wants to come here and have meetings with residents, that there's a space here for them. That there's a wellness space, so that if there are blood pressure clinics or other wellness checks, or that we can have space for that. A fitness room, a multi-purpose room. So this will continue to get reconfigured based on the feedback that we get. And before I hand it over to our, I also want to touch on phasing a little bit. So phase one is almost everything above Crest Avenue, with the exception of the Veterans' Museum and Art Center, because that's the power plant. And we want to make sure that the services to the rest of the site are maintained until all the way up there, because there will be residents living on campus. Currently, Sergeant and laundry is vacant, so that's why we prioritize the buildings that are north of Crest Avenue. And Commandons is also vacant. Williams does have residents in it, and the plan is for the residents of Williams to move into one of the other buildings. Hopefully, if they move into Kewell, then that means the likelihood of, then that limits the likelihood of them needing to move more than once. So the state will be engaging in relocation consultants to help walk residents through all of this and help them move, and the cost of moving will be covered by the state. So phase one will be these buildings north of Crest Ave. Phase two is the John Adams Building, as well as the new building. Phase three is the Townhouses and Sullivan, and then phase four is Kewell and the Veteran Resource Center. And the reason why it seems a little awkward that we're doing phase, this building, phase two, this building, phase three, and this building, is straight forward, is because currently there are the kitchen in here, and the veterans that don't have their own kitchens means that this is where they eat their meals. So we wanted to make sure that we put this in the last phase, so that we ensure that that service isn't disruptive. So the total number of units proposed is 241, primarily studios and one bedrooms, but some two bedrooms and even one three-bedroom that we're able to fit in the Commandons, because of the configuration, because it's historic rehabilitation, we have to keep the, a lot of, certain walls we can't demolish, we have to keep the sizes of certain roofs, so that meant that we were fitting a three-bedroom in the complex. But phase one is sending units, phase two is eighty-one units, and phase three and four are around forty-two, forty-eight units.
Thank you, Carmen. You did most of that. So architecture on this campus is limited. The architecture that is new on this campus is limited. The majority of the buildings are not going to be, are going to be maintained and restored, to the exception to one building, as Carmen had mentioned. But when we come in and rehabilitate historic buildings like these, accessibility is first in mind, because the buildings currently are not accessible. And this is something very high on the veterans' priority list, and as well as ours. So our interventions are not only to add units, but also sometimes to connect buildings, so that the new building acts as the entrance, as a way to serve in an accessible way the non-accessible current buildings. So I want to start with, our first intervention, which is the connector building. It's a small building with sixteen, sixteen units? Twenty-two units, but it serves, in fact, the laundry and buildings. So these arrows here indicate the building entrances. So as we look at the northern part of Crest Avenue, the connector building becomes the point of entry for these three buildings. It will have the elevators, it'll have the means of vigorous, and it will serve as like the mailroom and the entrance to this part of the campus. Our other new addition is the East Parcel. And again, the East Parcel Building, which is the largest building that we're putting on site, is also acts as a entry point between, to facilitate accessibility to the John Adams Building. So this red arrow is the entrance to these both parcels. This strategy also allows us to minimize the multiple points of entry along the sidewalk, so you will see from JP there on how this relationship between minimizing the points of entry and allows us to also maximize the sidewalk activity and the planting along Crest Avenue. There's a, there's a small reconstruction of the current building right here where the cafe is. It's a later addition to the Sergeant's Building that we needed to remove, so that we could integrate a one-stop elevator and a stair inside this building to serve as the accessible feature for the plaza between the upper double and lower double. So as we look at it in three-dimensionality, all the brick-looking buildings are the ones that will remain, are the existing buildings. This is the connector building, and this is the East Parcel Building, and this is the reconstruction of the cafe structure that I had mentioned. This building has been worked so that it is sensitive to the historical character of both buildings, left and right. It doesn't exceed the buildings on the right and on the left in terms of height. And same thing with the East Parcel. The East Parcel measures the height of the Adams Building. There's also in addition, I'm going to go back, because I keep forgetting about these guys. We are building townhouses on an empty parcel here that is part of this redevelopment. And these are in line in proportions with the, with the smaller residential structures along Summit Avenue and more end. And we'll see more of those tomorrow. So a quick elevation of Crest Avenue, where these new buildings manifest themselves, the proposed cafe reconstruction, the connector, which height doesn't exceed Williams, and its front actually is in line with the laundry building. As we look at the south elevation of Crest Avenue, this is the East Parcel Building that is next to John Adams. It takes advantage of the hillside going down, but again, it steps, multiple steps to really go down the hill with, go down with it. These are some views. These are three-dimensional views on the different parts of the campus. These are very conceptual images. That's the, that's the townhouses along the lower end of the campus, and that's, that this is some of the, the end of Summit Avenue, is how you turn to go up and get to the campus. And this is the entrance to Crest Avenue. Sergeant Building on the right-hand side, the animated Plaza Cafe right here, and then this old building on the right-hand side. Though not much has changed in the buildings that you see here, please note the re-landscape and the sidewalk, and the creation of a place that Carmen had mentioned initially was our focus, and JP will talk about. More of a close-up of that Plaza Cafe with the Veterans Art Center going to the end. And this is the building that will have the one-stop elevator that will allow people to go down from this level to the Veterans Art Center.
These guys are architects. They're getting drawn, so that's better.
Hi, JP, continue to chill off, that's the part of it. So we did our research for the second, and we covered some of these, we discovered some of these photos and drawings, etchings from mid-nineteenth century and early to mid-twentieth century, the historic soldiers' home campus. And what, what is apparent to us is that Chelsea was a very different place. This site is a very different place. It almost felt more pastoral. And while we can't go back in time to recreate exactly what it was like, then we're trying to bring back some of those qualities back into the landscape, to really create outdoor spaces that honor our veterans. The overall site plan was previously discussed, but the, the main goal here, as far as the outdoor landscape spaces are concerned, is to provide our veterans a variety of different outdoor spaces. Where currently, if I had to make comment on the existing conditions right now, it feels very much like a one or two-note outdoor experience. There's the street, which is pretty much feels like a photo fair, and lawn, open lawn, and not much else. So our goal is really to add more notes to that experience, to create plaza conditions outside a cafe, a new cafe, for example. Victory Garden is mentioned before, walled, more passive quiet space. Adams Courtyard, and the John Adams Building serves mostly senior veterans, that is more of a quiet courtyard for those veterans. Sullivan Courtyard, which is probably more active for residents, before outdoor gatherings and seedings. And then, as mentioned previously, a community play area, which is open not only to the neighborhood, but also potentially for veterans with families and their children. Really, the goal for the outdoor spaces is to prioritize people and trees. And it seems like a simple idea, but really, the trees that are there now, they were probably more trees here at one point, and over time, because of health or tree hazards, they have been able to not be replaced. So this is the existing condition. Some of these trees are volunteers, maybe not planted, but there's very few of them, so it's very, it feels very exposed when you're out here on site. By simply adding trees to Crest Ave, we can increase the comfort level and the more comfort and better experience of the street for Crest Ave. But we will also be adding trees all along with different outdoor spaces. The diagram showing these outdoor spaces now, and some of these are programmed. And what's interesting is that perhaps our largest open space is over at the future site of the East Parcel Building. But because it is slowing, it is not, it's not used very much. It's, and these other spaces are outside. Sullivan is also equally big, or very big, but it's also more exposed. So it's also, I would argue, that it's not heavily used. So this is the proposed commission. As mentioned earlier, we're adding a variety of different size open spaces to this campus, part of the campus. And really, the idea is that it's not just one, it's many different kinds of spaces, so that there's a variety of them. When it comes to circulation...
When it comes to circulation, this is where prioritizing the people comes into play. Very much around this part of campus, it's a two-way street with very little sidewalk connecting to the neighbors on Summit and the neighbors on Hillside. In fact, you cannot go around this part of the campus. It's very much cut off in terms of pedestrian circulation. And not only that, but by having this two-way traffic, that, that car gets that much more space, and it feels more like a floral fair and less like a pedestrian friend in the street. So we are proposing to reconnect or connect this part of campus to the neighbors, both on, by extending the sidewalk on Summit Ave and also completing the loop around this part of the campus, so that it's not only serves the residents and veterans, but it will also serve the neighbors so that they can walk around and experience and enjoy this part of the campus as well. On Crest Ave is probably our biggest vehicular circulation change, and the reason, the primary reason for that is to give space for the trees. And by giving space for the trees, we are proposing to remove one direction of traffic and making that one-way. In addition to that, we are also suggesting ways of creating raised crossings so that it's another way of calming traffic down on Crest Ave. So these are flush crossings that allow pedestrians to cross from one side to the other. An expanded raised crossing where it relates to the Cafe Plaza, but smaller ones down the street, again, which will help, we hope, further calm the traffic. Also, Hillside Ave, especially on this side by the neighbors, this two-way and two sides of parking. To add this sidewalk, we have to, we would have to, the dimensions are so tight that we have to remove one side of parking in one direction of travel. And we'll get to those street sections to describe how tight that, that street is. These are the street sections that will go through for various conditions around our campus. This is Crest Ave, looking towards the CLC Building, Sergeant to our right, Sullivan to our left. The street is very narrow, even here, with two lanes of traffic, two sides of parking. The sidewalk is very small. Dimension of the, the existing condition above and the proposed condition below. This proposed condition is at that raised crossing, at that Cafe Plaza. So it's slightly unusual or not typical section, but we have a more typical one after this. But to describe Crest Ave, it's fairly narrow right now, and the sidewalk is pretty minimal. At the raised crossing, of course, it's a different condition where the pedestrian experience spans the width across Crest Ave. But for the more typical street section, just a little further down Crest Ave, again, laundry to our right, headquarters in Sullivan to our left. Just to show you, right, this describes how tight the sidewalk is, especially for the trees. This street has managed to survive, but it's atypical, I would say. Similar dimensions just down further this street. At this particular section, where laundry is extremely close to the street, it's almost right on top of it. And other buildings are not as close, but we want to illustrate this condition to show it's a special-type condition, to create space for trees and for people. We are narrowing the road down a little bit, and we're still keeping two sides of parking, but removing the lane of traffic. Going down around the site, this is on Hillside Ave with the neighbors, John Adams in the background. The feeling on, from the neighbor's perspective, with the wall, the chain link fences, that very much this campus is removed, is detached from this neighborhood, probably intentionally so. But this street also happens to be two-way with two sides of parking. Again, very narrow. Looking at the section, we're dealing with less than thirty feet of basically wall curve for all that traffic and all that parking. When we add a sidewalk, to create more space for people to circulate around this part of the campus, we will remove one side of parking in one lane of traffic, which we hope will also help calm the street as well. Going down Hillside Ave, further down, this is Kevle on our left, Sullivan kind of off the, off the frame to our right, and quickly, and CLC in the distance. This is another area where there is no sidewalk on the campus side. The road is fairly wide, actually, and it has two sides of parking and two lanes of The existing condition right now. Again, to create a sidewalk in this particular area of Hillside, we're not removing one lane of traffic, we're removing one lane, sorry, one side of parking to fit in a sidewalk. And this, this particular section, this play area that we mentioned, that I mentioned earlier for not only the residents, but the neighbors, but also, off the page, is the Sullivan Courtyard, which is closer to Sullivan.
I'm sorry, I have to interject, because you're talking about removing a number of lanes of, on-street parking in a neighborhood that is already lacking adequate parking. How many parking spaces are you proposing removing from the neighborhood?
So yes, parking is always a big...
It's huge in Chelsea, and it is one of the biggest complaints people have about a lot of the new developments going in, not having, you know, parking. And I'm just, you know, imagining the neighborhood being very unhappy at realizing they're going to lose a great deal of on-street parking. So again, how many spaces are you talking about removing?
Terms of the on-street parking that we're proposing to remove is all on Hillside Ave and all on the campus side of Hillside Ave. There are many different things happening on this side of Hillside. There's utilities, hydrants, walls, but by doing a rough count, it's about thirty on-street parking that we would be removing here. In terms of the off-street parking, we're adding off-street parking by adding, I don't think it's just mentioned, but we're adding a parking deck on the rear side of this part of the campus.
Will it be accessible to the neighborhood? Because you're going to be removing neighborhood-street parking.
So, well, I can address the parking. So I guess maybe just to start from the beginning, the proposal here is to create 240 neighborhoods. Currently, the non-sullivan occupancy is 205. And of the current residents that live there, there's about a ratio of half of residents have cars and half don't. So I'll start with the off-street parking and then talk about on-street parking and talk about the strategies that we've discussed with, say, staff to address that. So in terms of off-street parking, we're proposing 121 off-street parking. Includes a parking deck, a surface block, and the gates are responsible for hiding the townhouses. And that's about a point-five ratio, which matches the current demand from the residents. Our understanding is that there are actually a lot of residents right now that park on the street because of accessibility, because getting back there from living in Sullivan is quite difficult, and there are a lot of current residents that park on the street. And with the Crest Ave new on-street parking and the left space right Kevle, thinking that most likely our residents would be the ones parking here, that's another seventy-five spaces, and that would bring us to a point-eight-two ratio. And we had conversations with Commonwealth about this area is not part of the least area, we're doing ninety-nine areas with Commonwealth, this area is not part of the least area, but we are talking with D.C.A.N. about potentially licensing, licensing this area for parking for Kevle to help alleviate that. And if we were to count these spaces, that would bring us to a point-eight-eight ratio. We have talked to the city about the potential to do a parking district that encompasses both the Crest Ave and Kevle, any spaces in front of Kevle, just to help alleviate concerns that the residents of the new veterans, of the veteran home, would be spilling over to the neighbors. In terms of on-street parking that is currently on Hillside, we're proposing to create, I guess, sidewalks for pedestrians, and in order to do so, I mean, this, based on the image that D.C. showed, does feel like a quite unsafe condition, have two lanes of traffic plus two lanes of parking. Whether it gets utilized that way is another question, but we're proposing that putting a sidewalk here, we understand that there is parking concerns, and we would propose to put a sidewalk here to think that it's important to...
Yeah, so what you have, I'm trying to catch your name?
Shirley.
Shirley, surely. Yeah, you know, just to follow up on this, I mean, you could look at this, this is a really not safe condition, right? And we actually had some discussions about, I mean, there are signs here, but there's nothing even, nothing even marked, you know? We're even wondering if these actually are, you know, sort of, you know, people may use those, you know, these are probably used, if they're actually, you know, sort of legal spaces. I know that, you know, it's never easy to take a park away, but keep in mind, there's only housing, this housing is just on one side, and, you know, we, there's not a lot of options here because, you know, we really need to put it, I mean, I think we'd all agree, we've got to have a sidewalk. I mean, we have to, we have to, we have to highlight pedestrians and make it safe for them, unless it's a very dangerous, dangerous condition.
Is the neighborhood, you said you've had meetings with residents in the neighborhood. Are they aware?
No, we're not okay with it, but I don't know if it's open to sleep now or...
Not yet.
Yeah, so we have that, and she was at the meeting, I'm sorry, we're here.
Let's keep a little worry in. We all will be meeting subsequent to this. Apparently, we don't speak to the public, to the guests, and to members of the board all at the same time.
Got it, okay. So yes, so we did have a meeting, and that was one of the...
Thank you.
The other thing, like, I'll believe...
So I just have a question. Since this is going to be, according to the proposal, rerouted as a one-way street, that's what I guess.
I think we've allowed the good of traffic condition, but yes, that's what we're proposing.
Right, yes. You could put a sidewalk in front of that wall and eliminate the parking on that side and still have plenty of space, more space than is currently available because it's going to be one-way. And as you're going to be tearing the wall now, according to the proposal, I'll venture to say, move it back a little bit and put a sidewalk there.
So you're saying, so you're saying the one-way, where you think you could still get the parking, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying if that becomes a one-way street, it obviously is not twice as wide as currently is, because it's a two-way street, yes.
Well, I, I would think that actually, if you had two cars that are heading each other, for me, I maybe if I'm not the great, most comfortable, I mean, small spaces, I would probably...
You're not a lost and forgotten.
Yeah, that's true. I would probably wait on the side for the other car to pass, because it's very tight for two cars to be passing through.
Absolutely. Happens all the time on that street. People pull over, car goes by. But now it's going to be just one car going in, one way, now the street is twice as wide, even with the parked cars there. And if eliminated, the parking, so I might...
Yes, it's all can be studied further, and the eight-foot traveling is very narrow. It's a two-way condition, so can people drive it? Yes, and people do, I'm sure, right now. It's not an ideal dimension for travel.
I understand. That was my answer. I have another question. Is there access to the flooding area from, from the street in, in, yeah?
Yes, the goal is to have that. I think there are just one more slide, actually, about stormwater, that's right. Bill, you want to finish this off and then open up for...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Now, sure. Do you just, yeah, this is what I'm...
Can you, my name is Bill Lott, who's engineering and a little support man for the project. Now here, we propose to incorporate some stormwater strategies for each of the sites, you know, to lock control, you know, to reduce the rate of runoff and volume, you know, from each of the sites and impacting any abutments. And then, we propose to collect that water and recharge it into the ground and otherwise, you know, after that, add an overflow that we discharge to the city storm drain system that surrounds the campus. And as mentioned up here, we intend to use fire retention, infiltration, such other systems on the west side. We'll have catch bases, deep sum, deep, deep sum and quick catch bases along one of all the structures to improve the quality of water that is dropped from the site so that the overall stormwater outfall, the discharge to the river or to what having is a lot cleaner than it is right now, which really is not, because it's not really the main control that features to itself, improve the quality of water. And there was the water controls, you know, for catch bases, seep slots, and to prevent any runoff, certain water droplets. And one thing that was discussed last week, zoning again, formally, I'm sorry, those two, five, some street trees in the tree filter boxes that the city has been using for a number of years now, so looking at that as well, too, especially with the number of trees that are proposed among the roadways of the campus. And then, we love that, you know, we're just connecting to the utilities that happen to be available soon, and, you know, water, and obviously, there is available electric, telecommunications, cable, into that picture.
So is this system going to be installed under, under Crest Ave or under future structures?
No, it'll be installed underneath the other properties.
Other properties?
Yeah, right, no, I'm not, no, we're not, because the streets have public railways, we're not proposing any stormwater collection systems in there. We'll connect to them for our overflow with just pipes, but we're not proposing to have any dedicated structures to collect water, store it, recharge it, and then discharge it.
So I think that's the end of our presentation, so obviously, the following.
Question?
I got a couple of questions. It's all about landscaping. One, with bike lanes. Two, have we got, make it question one-way? Bad idea. What about if you eliminate some of the trees and put in flower boxes in all of your buildings so that the veterans can maintain their own flower boxes? They like the garden, I personally kill it, they look at, but I'm not, you know, so if you put less trees and... you put less trees and then putting the flower boxes on all the buildings, you would get the color and what I think you're looking for, but if you have a cafe, you have deliveries, you have a one-way street, you were gonna, you're gonna just, you know, stop it, you know what happens, you have to admit if somebody gets ill or something? You're gonna have ambulances, fire engines, things like that going on in Crest Ave. I also think the play area is way too far, because the townhouses are way over on Summit Ave, and the play area, that's more than likely where the families are going to be living. There's no, you're not gonna send your six-year-old kid or eight-year-old child across the street to go play, there's no area in the, in the townhouses to play. Like I said, there, grains, platforms, sort of do slow things down, but they also, could be damp just to winter, so when it clouds, things like that, when you get snow, we don't have a way to put in, when the, when the sort of snow plants come, but I think incorporating the buildings are a good idea. I think that this is a very big piece of property, so I think mobility is important, so I, changing traffic directions is a little tough, I mean, we're talking about a very tiny little city, we've all experienced it with the, with the sub-structure, and it's gonna happen again next summer, so, but you have, you know, if you're gonna have children up there, then you, you've got to figure out how to, you know, it means there's going to be school buses coming up there, there's gonna be...
The 111.
You know, and also parking, it's still gonna be an issue, because you have to deal with the staff. It's not like just residents, so if there's, if there's 115 parking spaces right now for the residents, means the rest of the parking is being used by staff. And so, you're still gonna have staffing, so you're still, by eliminating the parking on Hillside, you are going to, unless you kind of bust the staff in from somewhere else, you're still gonna, you're just eliminating parking, you're not adding more parking, or you're just gonna have people who legally park.
So, it's definitely our staff, and we can have them park in different areas, right? So that's, that's, we're a property management.
And the number of staff is gonna be different than what's there right now, it's probably gonna be like less than 10 individuals.
That's for the property management, you also have nurses and doctors.
That would, for the C L C.
That they don't park them.
Yes.
And they will not be, I guess, that doesn't, that's a Commonwealth property, and this will become kind of rose-managed property, so it's a completely, I guess, they, yeah.
If I could just add, when they actually ever send, I'm senior project manager for D C A N, working on this project, so when the community living center is complete, there will be parking between the chapel and the conceit right there, and actually, I believe this is the parking configuration in here. It is not there in place today, because the quigley is still operational, and so when quigley operations can move fully into the community living center, the area between chapel and the community living center will be in its final condition, and parking that is for visitors and staff for the community living center, so just so that's clear.
Thank you.
And Richard, comment about the community play area, so our goal was also to make this accessible to the neighborhood, because we didn't want to create like a private playground for the townhouses, so that was the intent, and I guess I, maybe, would love kind of feedback on whether that's the right approach to take, or whether the thought is to kind of create more parking spaces.
And then, the last word, there's no water features. No fountains, no pools, well, I mean, it's like a pool, but there's no fountains, there's no, I mean...
There can be, it's not necessarily...
Correct, I understand, but I, I understand the trees, I love trees, everybody does, but I think making Crest in one way is a disaster. I, I, it's just, I just can't imagine, I just think it's a disaster waiting to happen. And I actually think it would be fun to put the flower boxes up, because I think it would have a lot, it would tie all the buildings together, I think it would be a really fun little thing to, I don't know how to start, I just don't feel about that, but...
Yeah, that's gonna be a challenge, because we...
Yeah, but we, sure, you guys can be persuaded, but I'm just saying, if you, it's just, it's...
So, you brought up about, about, sorry, about deliveries and the ambulances getting in and out of there, can you just walk us through how that would happen?
So, I think deliveries would, for a lot of the functions of the buildings, deliveries will likely happen in the back, so there will be spaces here where, I think this is where it would make sense for the cafe to have deliveries, for ambulance...
And, and, also, the trash is also gonna happen on the backside of all these buildings. This is where we are putting all the trash items that are related from the back. We're trying to keep Crest Avenue nice and clean, and like, front of that, sorry.
And in terms of ambulance, it's, we haven't, I guess, we, we've talked to neighborhood council, but I would add that there, there's not where, wherever the buses on the street, yeah.
But it, but it would stop all traffic.
I just also wanted to know that we had one meeting, the city staff, fire, police, and special services, I think. Yeah, I, I know the error was concerns about making sure that appearances for the fire department could get over, but they did not identify any concerns with the ambulance as, as...
So, I mean, I understand, I understand the concerns, but I think we're, we're really trying to bring this back to the sort of the historical nature of it, and really make it a more friendly place. We go up there now, it's, it's hard, it's very, and so, like, they have these trees, they have this, this new calming effect to have, to have the one-way, we think it's really valuable, and I think we can deal with some of those emergency questions, as Ashley said, like the police and fire, I'll share with it, I think they're a couple with it. We think it's, we think this is a really critical part of the redevelopment process, it's really kind of the center stone of what we're trying to accomplish here, to really make this a, a, a place of, where people want to come, and if we go back and we go to a, to a two-way, that really changes what we're trying to accomplish here. So, you know, if there's some concerns, but I'd like to see if we can work around the concerns, try to see if we can really try to address that one way to your satisfaction, but that's really what, you know, this kind of, kind of the centerpiece of what we're really trying to accomplish here, really, and this is for the veterans on both sides, and they can come out, and make them enjoy it. I do like your, on the community player, and Carmen is right, we're trying to get people to come to this area, we have beautiful views, we want the neighborhood to come, we want people to come this, we want people to come this, and on a Sunday afternoon, we bring their kids up and play, and maybe we see the area. But, and I think we look at our, our plan, I think most units in this section are studios and ones, right? And the two bedrooms are all the townhouses, so I actually do like your idea, you do want to put a private playground here just for the whole thing, but I think the idea of having some kind of toddler space up here does make a lot of sense, because if there are families that are here, to your point, that actually need to come all the way down here, we should look hard at putting a, like, a toddler in here, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Same, and, and to play areas.
Yeah, there's no reason why I can't, I mean, because really, like, and this is what, this is, this has actually helped to us, because, you know, sometimes we have kind of blinders on about what we're, what we're doing. The whole concept of this was not to create a playground for kids, and the area really was to create a playground for the community and for everyone. So, if there are families that can hear, we definitely should think about, about putting a playground in here. And the idea of a water feature, yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea, my management, my management would kill me if you say that, but...
Actually, I think we have a water town.
With that, I know.
This is a beverage of the water. So, I have an observation that you can consider, the, the side, the south side of Crest, has all, despite this variation, that variated surface, it always struck me as kind of a wall.
Yes.
And, and I wonder if punching a hole between...
What was the source?
Between, what if the avenues and the, and connecting Crest to Hillside, and providing access to the play area, not only for whoever might be up there, but also for people in the neighborhood, would, in my opinion, wish, provide some relief from that long side, which, I think is deleterious, it would also make a, a, going for a walk much more interesting. If you had to walk all the way down, you know, but you come down here and whatever, take a half a walk instead of a full walk, or, you know, blah, blah, blah. It, it almost seems like a logical thing. I like to think that if I was working on this, I would have punched a hole through it.
Hundred percent. I like that comment, I love that, I'll do the time, so I love that comment, and that's something we'd love to bring back to historic, you know, we have to, we have to deal with historic, and it's good that you said that, so we can whistle back to the...
In the R F P, this is very historic, because we did identify that this is a wall. The buildings are very similar, of the same height, and there is so much happening, views and sun coming from this side of the hill. This is how we started proposing this to the historic group, and they were not on board at the beginning. We wanted to open Bassett Way across, to really connect Crest Ave with the neighborhood. It is a very linear canvas, it is a wall, and you're hundred percent right, but so far, we have not been able to, to do that.
First floor, one way, and ice arch.
That's why we created this, this transparency here, and we created gardens where we can, but I totally, it is a very linear canvas, and it is, it is, it's in the absence of the place, because it's so there, and so linear, so the trees and narrowing down the streets, adding more sidewalk and places and benches for people to hang out and talk to one another, on this very linear, has been our focus to create the place. And we'd love to have his, the historic mission turn, turn their...
So, that's what I think. What do you have to add to this? Do you want to talk a little more about what we were able to do here with power plant, and taking that down, and being that...
So, right now, this is, there's a, there's an eight-foot high, this is the incinerator, eight foot, six feet high, little, very building, and that's what we were able to punch a hole through this, removing it completely, and really open at least this side of the neighborhood, but this side of the, and creating that plaza. And I don't think we said it enough, maybe in the beginning, the intent is not to create only a place where veterans are not going to be isolated, it's a place where the community wants it. Right now, it's so there that no one will see it.
That a hole...
This is a public plaza for everybody.
And it's, it's the access that really creates to get to the power plant, which we talked about earlier, which is, this is gonna be the art center museum, so we're gonna take that power plant, and use it, and real kind of space, and be able to access it through here, which is, you know, after, after the streets gate, that's why the second kind of, most kind of advice, each other, so...
Just, we have to address the history, as a former member.
And what's the, what's the plan for lighting?
Well, we obviously have street lights, but beyond that, we haven't been developed at that level of detail, but we will, lighting, we are proposing lighting for the plaza, overhead lighting, but...
We do have street lights.
We'll have street lights.
We just haven't designed it yet.
It hasn't been designed, but lighting isn't an essential part of this project, yes.
And we'll have kind of, when we submit the package, we'll have kind of typical lighting and basic stream that we propose. Where would the public be allowed to go? You mentioned that that, that transline, that to be part of a vitalized campus, but it appears that, you know, especially with, you know, the map, it showed all the arrows, they're really trying to limit access, so I guess I'm trying to understand, do you want it to be safe and private for the veterans, or are we trying to encourage, I mean, light in any of this space?
Can I talk to this a little bit? So, the part, this is all people, neighbors, who continue to experience the, the streets and the spaces. This is a cafe and a plaza, it will be, there's no gates, there's no fences, it's open to public. Same thing that is guarded, though, it's used by the veterans, it is going to be out there for people to also walk around and experience. I mean, we all believe that when you have more activity on the street, it's actually safer for those who live in this location, and that's part of making the place actually continuously day and night, safe for, for everyone. This is an open courtyard, and, J P, correct me if I'm wrong, the community play area is for the public access. We have some private courtyards for the resident use only, which are actually at high elevation, like the ad courtyard and the Sullivan courtyard, and, and this is very billy, so they will be a separated elevation, high from the body.
So, this cafe is the only building that the public would enter?
Yeah, it does, that's the, the building access, because these are gonna be apartments just like the apartment that I lived in, and inside, it's gonna be studio, one bedroom, and occasionally, two bedrooms, so interior is all residential space, the only spaces that are residential is the museum and art center, and then on the ground floor is the Veteran Resource Center, which, if gay officers here meet with, or a resident lives here, but there might be a veteran that lives maybe on Summit Avenue, I presume that that, that is the space, the Veteran Resource Center, that is kind of open to color, but the rest of these are gonna be residential buildings. So, our goal is to also protect the safety of our residents, that's, it's a balance, yeah. Thank you.
All right, just to interrupt this portion of the meeting, and ask if there are any people here who would like to address a more, yeah?
Thank you.
You have to identify yourself, and tell us what you think.
Thank you. I'm Alice Amal, and I live on Eleanor Street, and I thank you for, for hosting this meeting. I have three comments and a question, and I'm trying to remember them all. So, one is that the bus stop at the top of the hill requires a lot of room to move around there, just want to make sure that you're thinking about that.
Yes.
Okay. The one-way, I think is a big mistake, I think taking away parking is a big mistake. Eleanor Street and Willard are both very steep, and both very difficult to get up during snowstorms, and Hillside is flat, and a lot of people park there, because that's the only place that we can get to or park on. I walk my dog at least every day on Hillside and on Crest, and I feel very connected to the residents and the staff at the soldiers' home, and I love the walkway that goes through what is now the Sullivan courtyard. There's a nice set of stairs, I don't see any need for an additional sidewalk, there's a great sidewalk on the other side of the street, and then you walk up the stairs and go through and talk to the guy who smokes a pipe and does the donkey, and it's great. And then I, yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just my last question is about the logos that were on this slide, related to the resource center.
Why are you starting with this?
Was it, I think it was that.
Yes, I wrote that. That, yeah.
She wants to...
Oh, so, it's the service provider that I talked about, I mean, that we provide these services, and our approach to services is that it's always a collaborative approach, that there's no single service provider that provides all the services, and the city of Chelsea Veteran Services, obviously, is a key group that we need to talk, we will be working with. Reata Home Healthcare is another service provider that provides wellness checks and wellness visits that we've worked in the past, that we talked about using here. Mass Art is actually an organization that we talked about, talked with, to potentially program the Veterans Museums and Art Center. Chelsea Collective, local Chelsea nonprofits. Homebase is an organization that provides services for veteran families. So this is going to be a evolving.
Greenery is your organization here, I guess, Greeners?
Yeah, she's on the board.
I'm just, I don't think that they, these organizations endorse this necessarily.
No, they don't necessarily endorse it, yeah.
But these are, these are organizations that we all met with to talk to and put the plan together, and they're excited to help and get involved. And so for the Greeners, we actually did talk to the staff there, and talked about Greenhouse and ways that they could do their programming, and different ways that we could interact and work with them. These are all groups that we talked to in advance and trying to get, understand, you know, how can this development be supportive to the native, to folks, and who would be interested in doing it? So there will be more added to that, but those are the ones that we've talked to so far. Now we're focused on turning on, figuring out the development. So let's go back, do you mind if I add some of the, no? Yeah. So go back to, go back to the, yeah. So I think, are you saying, you don't think we should, you think we should eliminate the sidewalk here and put parking, is that what you're suggesting?
I think that would be better. I think there's a sidewalk on the other side that people can use.
So it will go over here, across here?
Yep.
Someone navigate it? Okay. And then, so you also mentioned, what, you mentioned you didn't like the one-way. What is it about the one-way you don't like?
Oh, just because people regularly go both ways. And.
Yeah, but I mean, right, so.
It's a major thoroughfare. And like, there are lots of benches, and people still sit and walk their dogs and ride their, you know, wheelchairs on the sidewalks, but.
Right, and so I think, like, if you're, you know, not, like, if you're coming this way, this is all, you know, where the residents live. Like, if you're in the neighborhood, you're, you're going to come this way if you live down here, right, so.
But if you're going, if you're going to Washington Ave, you're going to, you go down Crest.
Yeah.
You don't go down Hillside to get to Washington. All the, all the people that live on Willard and Clark and Hillside in the lower part of Crest go on Crest to get to Washington Ave. And the Tobin and everything, you know, Wellington and all that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess at a recent town hall that I went to, the residents were talking about the incident that happened on Crest Ave. And I guess we were trying to react to what the residents were saying, so it was that because it is a thoroughfare, that if there are accidents, the residents told me there are accidents on Crest Ave, and that they feel unsafe crossing the street because there are a lot of cars that go. So I think that was one of the reasons why we decided.
Do you have data on those, on the accidents that happened there?
I, I feel you can probably ask the police department for data.
But I think it's more how does the data, but it's how they feel about it too. So like, if there's a perception that they're not safe, right, I mean.
We can do traffic.
Yeah, we walk there every day, and we feel safe, so I don't understand. I live right there, and I never see an accident. I talk to the guys every day that I walk up there, and there's more than enough space, and I've never heard of this being an issue ever. And I drive that every single day, so like, as a person who uses the thru and lives there and sees the traffic, I think we kind of know better than anybody else what is going to be for our neighborhood. So if we have to utilize it, most of the time, I don't know what's at, you know, have to be, there are always changes and everything happen.
From a planning standpoint, I think what we reside is beautiful campus. But we're in this awkward phase right now where a lot of people still run cars. Ten years from now, it'll be a different conversation. So I would suggest a phased approach to however you deal with the sidewalk on Hillside Ave. There's a strong feeling about one or two-way traffic on Crest Ave, and that maybe there's a way we can phase into one-way.
Yeah, so that's a great point, because actually, the proposed changes to the street, because we need to make sure we also work on the building south of Crest Ave before we do this and then have to destroy it and ruin some of all the connections. Our proposal for the street changes isn't until Phase Three, so that's probably more like 2028, 2029, yeah.
Good point, John, I live at 34 Hillside Ave. I just have a few comments. One of them being, I think, I feel a little misled with this development because they're saying, they're using the term veteran, 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 everything's for the veterans, but I speak to the veterans, I go to church up there, they're all very scared that they're going to be displaced because they have a four-year contract that they can utilize, that they have, you know, they're going to put them around into these buildings, and then after four years, the rent is going to go up. Right now, they have no electric bills, they have no gas bills, and they have food on site that they're able to access. Once these buildings go in, they're on their own, they have to give utilities, they have to buy and cook food for themselves. They, you know, they're going to market this out, veterans prefer. It doesn't mean that veterans, a hundred percent veterans, that means low income is also, like, that is a low-income building, it's not just veterans. It's veterans prefer, they get first choice. But if somebody else comes in after them, that say a veteran hasn't applied yet, they're going to get the apartment, and then if a veteran comes in after them, it's going to be full. So I just want to make it clear what exactly, and you guys can address me on that, what exactly this is going to be, like, is it a lottery system? Again, is it the four-year program where they are going to have the same rent for four years, and then after that, are they going to be able to afford it? The other thing that I feel misled about is the fact that these places are not accessible. If you guys go back to the slide that shows Crest Ave currently, it was, you know, they just spoke about how, you know, the sidewalks are very cramped, the streets are very cramped, you know, it's not accessible. And then if you look at the slide, it shows that they're actually decreasing the size of the sidewalk. So it is, can you look right here? So the Crest Ave, it shows right there, the 611 sidewalk, and if you look down at the proposed, it's five foot. So they're not, they're not giving you more space. And there's a three-foot, three-foot of lawn that they're going to be taking away on top of it. So you're talking, this huge sidewalk that's basically, you know, fourteen feet, is now going to go down to five, to put a tree and take away parking. So it's just, it feels very misleading, like they're selling it to us in a way that it's going to be beautiful, and you know, it's going to, it's going to work so much better, but they're decreasing our space up there. Like I said, I walk it every day, I talk to the guys every day. And they're going to be putting one-way traffic, they're going to be taking away parking, they're changing the traffic road. The other thing is, they're also saying, you know, we're going to add all this green space. If you go to the proposal of the green space, what they're proposing is already there. They're actually taking away green space by removing the site on the right and adding a four-story building that's going to block all of Hillside's sunlight and view, and Eleanor, and Willard, because they're overbuilding on the site. So I'm all about development, and I want people to be able to enjoy coming up here, but I just feel as though this project is not, it's not to scale for the neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood, we have a lot of cars already, it's very slow. The winters are crazy here. These winters, like, if you guys have ever driven up Eleanor or Willard, you have to literally park on Hillside and leave your car there, and do not leave because you will slide down these hills. So they're not going to be, you know, and the other thing is the parking. I, I don't know if John can address this, but are they going to be subjected to the no parking sticker rule? Because there's, what, 241 units proposed? And I believe they're proposing, what, 100 in some odd spaces? So not even, it's not even a one-to-one ratio, there's three bedrooms in some of these units. So they're, they're not even, like, usually it's two, if it's a three bedroom, it's two parking spots. And then, you know, if you don't have it, you don't get a residential sticker. I don't know if that rule is going to apply to them, but they don't even have enough parking for what they're going to propose. Never mind, if they don't make them have parking, no parking passes, no parking stickers for these people, then they're just going to have a million people coming and parking and taking away the parking. So I don't know if I made it clear on that, but John, is there, are they going to be subjected to the parking ordinance, which is, they will not get a sticker if they don't have sufficient parking?
They have, they are, they have 305 units now. They have posted 241 total. Therefore, they're not creating new units, therefore, they're not subject to that.
Okay, but there's going to be 241 units in only, how many spaces? How many parking spaces?
121 off-street.
Off-street. Okay, so that's half, half of the parking. So there's 241, and there's only going to be 120 parking spots. And then take away 30 parking spots on Hillside, and then however many on the rest.
But what's the capacity, the 241 units, but what's the capacity of those units for residents? Like, how many residents can live in those?
Well, there's three bedrooms.
I know, they have a number. Right, but how many?
Scoot. So that we can all hear, and so we can stay on.
Top.
We'll speak one person and then.
Okay, if I could just close my argument here.
By all means.
This is information that we, no decisions, I mean, they haven't even submitted to the board yet. This is just to get an input of the board for, to inform them on the design to submit to you. It's not really meant for a discussion of the merits to be discussed, or this is another concern.
Okay, so not to be competitive, because like I said, I'd love to see this site be developed. I live there, I want it to be beautiful, I have a newborn, I'd love to bring her to the park. I, you know, I want it to be enjoyable, but I walk this neighborhood every single day, but I feel safe, I feel there's enough sidewalk space. I feel as though adding all these streets, taking away the two ways is just going to be insane. And again, a lot of the spaces that they've already said, oh, we're going to have this, the gardens are already there, the commonance space is already there. They're only taking away one of the spots that most of the guys use, which is on the hillside side of the street, the hillside, that you could see the view. And they haven't talked about how that's going to affect the neighbors. This huge building that's going to be overcasting already on a hill, and they're going to put four stories on top of that. So think of how that's going to shadow over on us and the rest of the neighborhood and towns there.
My name is Victor Tierney, and I live on Eleanor also. My understanding is that, that this project isn't required to abide by decisions in Chelsea by the board, the zoning board, the planning board, the conservation board, the permitting board. But you've committed to abiding by their decisions? Is that correct?
It is a state property, they are exempt from zoning. They're not exempt from weapons, although there are no weapons up there.
They're not exempt from, from what?
From the Protection Act.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But there are no weapons up on this side.
Right.
But they are technically exempt from, they agree to this process.
Uh, sure. We expect them to go through, to abide by the vital requirements, yes.
So let me know, not give a part of it.
But they've, you have committed to abiding by the decisions that the zoning board makes?
I mean, so I think our general approach is, we want to know these projects, knowing that we're going to be here for a while, managing this property also, we're, we're going to be your neighbors in the long term too. So I think our goal is to propose a project that works for the city of Chelsea. And it's not our goal to impose, it's balancing what we want to provide for the veterans and what makes sense for the city of Chelsea. And I guess, I think that's the best way I can answer that question.
Okay, so I'm mistaken that you, you haven't committed to abiding by the decisions that the zoning board might make?
If, once we go through the zoning, we're not, I guess, I don't, I don't know what that means. How would we? I think we're, we're here in speeding the process, and that's, that's what we expect as the public participants in a public-private partnership. It is a Penrose proposal, so Penrose is planning to submit to the process. So we're going to be submitting.
I understand you're going to submit.
The zoning board and the planning board.
I was asking you if you're going to abide by the decision.
I'll give you an example, so for instance, the ordinance for the parking sticker. So like, I just, I, I have a whole, if I decide to put five units there and I don't provide the parking for those five units, the people that move in, they don't get a parking, residential parking pass. So basically, they can't have a car because there would be nowhere for them to park. So if you guys are coming to the board and asking for 241 units and not enough parking, which you would be subjected to not getting a residential parking pass because you don't.
That's not correct, that's not correct.
Okay.
So they are, first of all, you're forgetting that most of the veterans in the building don't have parking.
Right, but there's going to be.
So they also, John just explained that they would be, they would be able to get parking permits. So. Yeah, so I, I get what you're saying about parking, because that's a big, that's a sensitive issue in Chelsea. I, but if you want Chelsea residents to come over there, they're going to drive. So that's what they're going to do. People are not going to hike up that hill. So, which is fine, I think it's a great idea, they have these spectacular views up there, but they are going to, which means they're going to drive. So I think that's why parking is somewhat of an issue. One of the ideas I've been thinking about is the cafe. I think the cafe is okay idea, like, a very original idea. I think you could put something else interesting in there if you wanted to put something that the public might like more. You could put a small amphitheater in there, or you could put a carousel. I think you could put something that would appeal to more of the families that are in Chelsea. You could put a dance hall there, group shows, I am not, but people love to dance. I think the cafe is interesting, but, sorry. Nicole, Nicole's mentioning that since they are now converting them to having to supply their own food, I don't think these veterans are going to have the disposable income to support a cafe, since they, so I think we need to put something in there that is not going to require money, you know, nobody, Starbucks, coffee gas, whatever it is. So I was just sort of thinking. I do think, again, I want to reiterate, Crescent is, is a, you know, part of bringing people together is, I understand, they are, it's a big thing, let's always make things one way, but you go to Charlestown, you go to Charles Street, Cambridge, go to all these places, it's a nightmare, people double park all the time, they double park on both sides. It's just, it's, you know, if an Amazon truck comes, you know, UPS averted the strike, you're still going to have, going to have a lot of traffic going down that road. And they're not going to go to the back. UPS, FedEx does not go to the back. They, UPS, they, they can get tickets until the cows come home. FedEx, they have to pay their own ticket, so that's a little more concerned. I assume that there's going to be handicapped parking spaces up there. I assume there's going to be loading zones up there. It's still going to, so, yeah. It's just, that's quite the biggest concern that.
Yeah, it sounds as if there are plenty of traffic concerns here, so it could be a good opportunity to potentially find some kind of traffic consultant to perform a traffic study, and actually seeing all the cars passing through. And if this is actually a, a, a proper decision.
And also, I mean, maybe consider, you know, the alternative. I mean, after hearing, you know, from, I mean, I wasn't at, or did the view last week's meeting with CBA to hear what their comments were about redirecting the traffic. But is it possible to consider? How would you proceed if you had to?
Yeah, it did not go up with the CBA meeting, there's no concern about it. I mean, but it sounds like you're, you're asking us to go relook at it.
Yes.
I think, you know, it's going to dramatically change what we're trying to accomplish here, but if you want us to relook at it, we'll relook at it. I think, you know, it's gonna dramatically change what we're trying to accomplish here, but if you want us to relook at it, we'll, we'll relook at it.
I mean, I think you could still, you, you, it is possible to accomplish a lot of what you hope to do. Maybe not as extensively. But I think it would, I would suggest that you do look at how it might be redesigned or designed, keeping Crest Avenue two-way.
I'm here thinking of, of certainly.
So with the new construction building, the connector building that will be designed to pass passengers, with the historic buildings given the existing envelope, we're not gonna be able to get that high one threshold, but we will be.
Need, uh? Need for existing buildings.
Um, so.
There's all sorts of incentives, you know, there's an incentive to, um, incentivize alternatives, means of transportation and, you know, ride shares, vans, you know, just trying to take the, the merit off of.
Oh, yeah, one thing that I guess I forgot to mention is that one of the services that we will be providing to the veterans, providing to have a small transportation van that sits kind of in front of their quarter, provide trips to the VA, trips to office offices, so that's one of the services that we do envision to continuing.
Getting that with the grocery store.
Yeah, so the grocery store, exactly. So one of the conversations we can have is whether the meetings, where you wanna go, where are the trips that we want to plan for, group trips, group outings, fun stuff, as well as kind of needs. So that's one of the things that we do plan to continue.
Can I give a comment just on the sustainability aspects? Right now, given the more stringent energy codes that are rolled out in districts and also Chelsea has not adopted yet the Optimum Code, which is even a more stringent energy code, it makes more sense. And if you adopt the Optimum Energy Code, we will have to comply with that, it's best apps. So we're already putting it forward and we will make a committee that they have to comply with that. Those buildings will be highly identified, we might not hit the mark on the existing buildings for past apps. And the reason why we're going past apps and not lean is because, because of the energy code, it makes more sense, we focus on the energy, which is very past apps focused.
That's great, I just wanted to know that sustainability.
Yeah, we're talking about it, it's, it's high on.
And the other thing within sustainability is the amount of permeable surface. Are you gonna be decreasing the permeability from the current campus to the, to the. Will there be less paved surface?
Even if there's the same amount of paving, our, our intent is to reduce the runoff, you know, from the site that we'll, we'll be, you know, collecting it. So, you know, you won't be seeing as much runoff, you know, onto the streets and so forth as there is right now.
And we're sorry to do that. Key item.
My experience.
My experience.
Very much, well, you know, our intent is to have something on each of the sites there to retain the water and so forth. So when it rains, it goes into the system and provides a direct future into, into environment.
Good. On, on the past apps, just as a quick aside, we have, we have four to do this, we've really got the last five years done in hard, but all new construction, all past apps. It makes it more challenging when you're dealing with the sort of buildings, but we, we, we do, are very long into it.
But even for the existing buildings, we have an energy consultant that'll be looking at birth rating. We're gonna try to get birth ratings in order to, because our goal is to make these envelopes efficient so that the utility bills are also very low. For a house building, I remember our contractor, it was July, they had closed the doors, they hadn't been cooled all, all weekend. When you walk in, it's cold stuff. So the really big obstacle, being sure that this energy efficient, that you don't have to heat or cool it as much or keep it tempered.
And I absolutely appreciate that you're trying to keep the feel and the look and feel of the existing campus and that's commendable. And I think that they're, they're, you know, appreciate the, the fact that you're leaning a little along the, right inside.
If I could just say one thing about the streets. We are coming to you all pretty early in the process, to be sure, it needs further study, traffic and all those. But with the new improved street, there is an opportunity, for example, to create space for trees and have permeability paid for those trees. It's paved, but it's permeable, so there's an opportunity there. Also, you know, this was really, because this is early in the, in the process, it's really a thought, it's an exercise in what would the street look like if you prioritized first? And maybe it's not quite the right balance yet. And, you know, we had to find the right balance between providing space for cars and providing space for people. But this is an attempt to think about prioritizing the person, prioritizing the trees.
I agree with your long-term goal, just, you know, just a hot button issue with the term of community.
Sir?
Yeah.
Could you, thank you, I'll take sorry, six C two L on the street. Could you go back to the traffic pattern picture with the red arrows? Yeah.
I just think our.
So making, making Crest one-way, I know I'm jumping on the dead horse and wagon, but I wanna get my point across. My concern with making Crest Avenue one-way is that it pushes all that traffic down hillside. So you're adding all of this traffic, it's all forced, anyone coming up from the other side has to come down hillside. Anyone coming down Crest has to now go down hillside. And you see that intersection where Eleanor, Hillside meet? That right now, its current condition is pretty dangerous because there, I think Hillside might have a stop sign. Eleanor doesn't, Hillside from the other direction doesn't have a stop sign. Adding all of that traffic to it is going to create more problems than you can imagine. I wanted a clarification, I thought I heard there are currently 205 units, but then somebody else said 305.
There's 305.
And are those like 305 rooms or apartments?
305, I guess their occupancy is 305.
Okay, so my concern again about eliminating parking is that you're saying there are 305. This development will bring in a, a different type of veteran, I'm assuming. It will be, we will have increased population here, a different type of veteran that may have more vehicles. And then going back to what we said about veterans preferred, if you're having non-veterans, then they are most likely going to have cars. So I don't think we can base the parking on our current statistics, based on the veterans who are currently living there and then what proposed changes are happening. And I'm really concerned about eliminating parking and I don't feel that this project has enough parking to sustain this by itself. I'm also worried about losing so much open space. I do love the idea of like breaking through the wall so veterans have the opportunity to access the Sullivan Courtyard, you know, and taking them off of Crest Avenue, you know. And then you said that there would only be 10 employees, I don't understand how that's possible. Especially like even the cafe, you know, you have a cafe, you have cleaning people, you have, you know, any type of refuse collection. That requires people and that's gonna be more than 10 people. So you're gonna have a lot of employees, people working and, you know, somebody gets a delivery for a new couch. I mean, all of these things are going to play into what that traffic on Crest Avenue is going to look like. And then as somebody who lives on Eleanor Street, I hear one to two ambulances, you know, a night sometimes. It's a regular occurrence. And so keeping that two-way and keeping that street as wide as possible is essential for that. And I have to share my concerns about the East Parcel Building. One, it could be pushed back, I am concerned about the neighbors there having this tall building right across the street from them. As we're talking about open space and making it accessible, you know, push that back some and have some open space there to give them some breathing room.
Just address the East Parcel Building a little quickly. It will cast no shadows on the people from the hillside because it is to the north of them, so the sun is this way and the shadows will be cast on Crest Avenue. So those of you who are here, there will be no shadow from that building coming, coming towards you. Also, we have to note that we carefully located the building in a way that this is Adams', this is the, the lane of Adams that is very tall. Our building is set back way further beyond. 62 feet from the other side of, of Hillside. And you can notice how further far out this building is from this house than Adams from this house. So there is, we're creating plenty of buffer between the edge of the street and the building, very differently than this worst condition that you currently have that is an existing condition on the street. And the building will now be taller than Adams.
If I could clarify my comment, cast a shadow, those people living in that house are gonna look out and see this huge building. And that is.
Yeah, really differently, not differently than these are looking at.
But we don't even add to it.
Yeah, we're, we're adding a building on that, that's cool.
So, I think also, I think just on the general parking, I think there's a couple of issues we're conflating. I think we're trying to break this down into a separate. There's the one issue about what's, you know, the neighborhood residents and our parking space is gonna be taken away or other residents, or the neighborhood people are parked. There's also the question about the population's gonna live here, what their car, car. We, so from our, our perspective, this is 100% affordable house, right? And it is, and it is a veterans preference and veterans will get to live here first foremost and, and again and again and again. We can go through, we can talk about that because that's come up and there's confusion on that. We need to figure out, I think that's not confusing because this is for veterans and veterans will live here. But, you know, we manage, you know, I don't know, 15,000 units, somewhere around, of course.
20,000 though.
And, and we are confident that the, the, between the combination of the off-street spaces that we're creating and the spaces that we would, we have on Crest Avenue in Port-au-Prince would be sufficient to serve this, more than sufficient to serve this population based on our experience in managing properties. So I think that's, those are sort of two different things and I think we can, you know, the thing our focus should be is really to address the issue for the neighborhood and making sure that, you know, trying to address their concerns about their parking needs is close to separately from the, from, from the residents.
But they're connected because if the parking overflows from this because there's not enough parking here, then it has an impact on the neighborhood. And with, you know, and with that said, when we're talking about the people who are going to be, you know, living here and parking here, how many properties do you manage in the Boston area? Because we are already very congested, we, you know, like I said, I live on Eleanor. There are people who live down on Broadway who park up on Eleanor because they can't get parking down there.
Yeah, I've driven there for 45 minutes.
Right, so, so this is a huge thing that will impact the neighborhood.
So we're, so just, you know, we're, we're right now in construction on 75 units in Boston and we have five parking spaces. And we're in the process of permitting an 88-unit building and also providing zero parking spaces. So, you know, we really feel that, you know, that parking is not something that we necessarily need for, for the leasability of the units, right?
Question, you say in Boston.
In Boston.
Right. Anything is a different.
No, I understand that, no, I said, you have.
Boston area.
Right, you said in Boston.
No, I said Boston area.
Oh, okay.
So outside of Boston where people rely on cars to get to work, we live close to the city.
Right.
You know, that's what I'm talking about, anyone coming here, so if it's not veterans coming to live here and it's low income housing, they are going to have vehicles, so your ratio isn't matching this project.
Right, so what I'm saying is, when I say when we manage all those properties, those are properties that are outside and the parking, and we think that the parking that we're creating here is sufficient for that based on the experience that we have with those, with those communities. Getting, so, so where those two conflict, right, so we, we have an idea for that, right? So one of the things we talked about earlier is that, you know, we, that we don't have to, you know, that have the residents restrict their parking ratios. One of the things we talked about and socialized is, as a combination for the neighborhood, is that it's possibly to take the next step and think about a parking district for this area, right? So that's what we have in blue. So when you think about this campus, right, when you think about the neighborhood, you know, this, this Crest Avenue is kind of naturally a parking for these folks, right? If you live down here, you're not gonna park your car, I would think, and walk all the way down here, you wanna park here, right? Same thing with Campbell, you know, this is, this sort of kind of, you think about, assume that this kind of is sort of, kind of, kind of own, if you will, rotation mark that you can think about for that. So one of the things we have socialized and thought about doing to accommodate the neighborhood is to limit ourselves to that, right? To say, hey, listen, what if we went to the city council or whatever and create a parking district where our residents can only park in these two areas? So that the residents on Hillside have, wouldn't have to compete with our residents parking there. And we're more than happy and willing to do that and pursue that as an accommodation for the neighborhood. I think that works well for the neighborhood and is something we're, we're comfortable doing. Because again, we're not too worried about our residents having too many cars to be on the site and we're, we're comfortable.
I think the key reason why the street parking right in front of the buildings is important is from our perspective, it's accessible, veterans that have accessibility issues need to be closer.
No, I'm not saying take that parking away, I'm saying you need to add more parking and so you've removed all the parking from Hillside.
Well.
On.
Right, we also, we also heard a comment that people wanna take the sidewalk and put parking back there, so we're gonna look at that, right? So.
We have to also talk about, because I think it's been, it's how I'm, I'm going to. The, we have a, so we are adding parking to the current, back parking office that is currently one-up.
Yeah, we're adding parking.
So we're adding already parking, there's off-street parking.
It's not there now.
But is it going to be sufficient for this project when new people move in?
Yes, that is our experience and that is what we're comfortable with, yes.
And I think just for the population, I just want to clarify that this is our intent and the Commonwealth's intent to make this a veterans project. And with our service provider, they manage multiple properties across the state and all their properties, it's permanent housing for veterans, they have waitlists. And our goal is that once we fill this, that we continue to have a waitlist and to continue to fill that waitlist with veterans working with the city, working with the VA, working with the service providers that will be on site to continue adding veterans to the waitlist so that this is a veterans campus, because that's historically what it's been and that's their intent and goal. The only reason why we can't go, yeah, that's our intent and goal, yeah.
And I just wanna ask that, that's the strongest statement we can make without violating fair housing. So it is our intention that this is, continues to be veterans' affordable housing.
I guess, could you explain like the preferred system? Cause obviously affordable housing, like if someone moves in, like they're gonna stay there for something, what we want, so I guess.
Yeah, so I guess maybe it's about, assume this is a one, two, three, four by six, six-unit project.
Yeah.
There are six people that apply and there are current residents that apply that live there. There are other veterans that apply and there are other applicants that apply. So then there's a, this is the initial visa. There are numbers assigned to these individuals and how.
Offered a half.
Offered a half.
And they pull out.
And they pull them out and where you are in order, that means that all of the current residents move to the top of the list. This person is evaluated, their income and their information, their application is put in and they get a unit. The second current resident gets a unit and then we go to the other veteran, one, other veteran, two, and the other applicant. So the goal is that we have seven units and all seven, all six units and all six of these are current resident, are veterans. And so that all 240 units are filled with veterans. And then on the waitlist, someone applies and they're on the waitlist, another person applies, they're on the waitlist. And a third person applies, they're a veteran and they're on the waitlist, but they become number one on the waitlist because of the veterans preference. So it continues, but yes, that's right.
It's weighted in favor of veterans.
Yeah, they always move to the top of the list.
Always to the top. So you keep the name of the soldier, stone?
Uh, they're currently, it's called the Veterans Home, I think the Commonwealth has renamed it and we don't intend to change the name unless there is desire from the residents of the Commonwealth to.
I would also, so that may change when Veteran Services became an executive office on March 1st. So it's the Veterans Home of Chelsea and the Community Living Center will continue to be the Veterans Home of Chelsea.
So especially if there are vacant units. So it's basically if there are vacant units, where you're going to anticipate vacant units, is it...
I, I think it's a hundred percent affordable, so I think there's going to be a need for veteran affordable housing. And, yeah.
I just want to ask, let's, let's do a notice scenario on this, right? Let's say instead of having six units, we have only four units, such as you mentioned, right? So you have these six people who are on the four units, right? They all get to find out, and this will be the order which may be drawn, right? And then these will be the, these will be the two people who get the units. So the current residents and the two veterans, these will be on the waitlist, right? Let's say three or four months from now, a veteran applies, where do they go? They don't go here, they go right there. And so the first available unit, they move into that. That's the concept. Not more than, the concept, that is the, that is, that is how we...
Not more, not more of that. I have a question. If I remember correctly, there are going to be fewer units in going forward than there are currently. Is that, am I correct?
The occupancy is...
The occupancy will be reduced. What is going to happen to the excess?
So there aren't three hundred individuals living there right now. All, there are currently about a hundred and thirty residents.
That's something to promise. Everybody will stay there now, during, after.
Again, in four years, things will change for those guys.
So let's talk about that, yeah. So, okay, can I... Does that? Yeah, so, folks that you're thinking about are going to be under fifty percent of Amenton income most likely, and maybe even, and even further, probably under thirty percent of Amenton income. So all of those folks that are in that category, they will move into a unit as a project-based section eight voucher attached to them. So that means they're not responsible for the rent. They're only responsible for thirty percent of the income to contribute to the rent. So if they made ten dollars, they pay three dollars a month for rent, right? The four years that you're talking, that you're referring to is part of the Uniform Relocation Act. So when you, when you make these changes, their, their, their rent has to stay fixed for four years. And that's the equivalent that the D-CAM is paying. So D-CAM will be paying the difference between what the residents are paying now and, and the rent that otherwise would pay, thirty percent of their income for four years. That's the promise that the state has made, that's a requirement by the law, and it's the promise that they've made to those residents. But after that goes, they, their rent, you know, may, may go up, and it's only thirty percent of their income, just like everybody else in low-income who that has a section eight that's in a low-income housing.
So do they have to apply for section eight?
No, they don't, because the project-based vouchers are tied to, there's two different kinds. There's roll vouchers and there's project-based vouchers. We will go out and get the project-based vouchers, we will tie them to the unit, not the person. So they will have the benefit of being in a unit that is subsidized, and they get that, they get that benefit of they don't have to pay, they don't have to pay thirty percent of their income.
You mean, I didn't realize they have a voucher, because it's moving into a unit where the rent is based on their income, based on thirty percent of their income.
So every year, they'll go into the management office, they'll show them what they make, and our manager, our manager will calculate thirty percent of that. There's even set-asides, I can give you, it's not my pay grade, but like if there's medical or other things. So it's not even full thirty percent of their, their income, it's a smaller income.
Are car owners, are there, is there a separate category for someone who's applying that has a car versus doesn't have a car? Can you, you know, incentivize those, the applicants who don't want that?
Yeah, so think of it this way, like, you know, like, we, we all make choices where we want to live based on what's important to us, right? If I'm a person that has two cars, and I really want to be access to my cars, and I want to put them in a driveway in front of me, they're not going to want to live here. They'll find somewhere else. We all make those choices, right? And so, you know, the sad reality is that there is an overwhelming need for affordable housing in this community, and you all know that. I'm just giving you an example, it's the best one that we have recently. It's not here, but it's in Hartford. So you can think about what happened in Hartford, we melted one out by five or ten here in Boston. We created the first phase of seventy-six units down in Hartford. We opened the waitlist for thirty days. We had a thousand people in those seventy-five. Totally different problem. Long run, but the point is to show that the need, you know, is overwhelming, so, right? So if I'm someone that really needs to, you know, like, the people will choose to be here.
Okay, but you, you are in a position where we can prioritize those who don't have cars, and I'm asking that you consider that.
Although, I don't think I can tell someone they can't live, if someone has a car, I can't discriminate against them and say it can't be a car.
Because they can move in and buy a car too.
Yeah, buy a car. But I don't have to, but I don't have to guarantee them a parking space, and it's, you know, if, if they, they park somewhere illegally and they get towed every night, that's on, that's on them.
Yeah, well, I went through it on another project.
Yeah.
Gave priority to the applicants who live in the class.
Yeah, it's possibly a tad fair, but you can charge people for a parking spot. It is kind of a tad of...
Yeah, these are, but all of them are existing veterans that live on campus also, and they don't pay it right now, so...
And this is a port-a-lot, we're trying to make it work.
Do you have any possibilities to add on the parking deck to increase the parking?
We are squeezing as much air as we possibly can. We got a hundred more spaces there, we guarantee more more spaces.
The higher we build the, the unit, the more units we lose, because it's going to block one side of the road.
Yeah.
Maybe on the size, that east side project, look for more.
I mean, we could certainly do that, but now we're, you know, we're going to trade off units for cars.
No, I just think it's more of a ruin with what you guys are trying to do. You're going to provide a place to live, they should have a place to park, and then also your neighbors, not more full, just like they mentioned, you know. I know that you guys have a concept that it's going to be, you know, they're going to park on Crest, they're going to park on Crest, but when there's no parking on Crest. Like, for instance, me, I live on Hillside. If I pull up and there's no parking on Hillside, I'm going up to Trent's, and I'm going to walk down to my house because I have to, because there's nowhere for me to park. So I'm just saying, like, I think that the parking, I know you guys don't feel as though it's going to be an issue. We live here, we deal with the parking every day, and we have overflow from Broadway and all other neighborhoods that come and park in the snow and everything else. So I know that you've got, like, even, like I said, even for us, like on Hillside, if we pull up at home and there's no spots, we're going to go up there and look for a spot to be able to park in, oh!
And that's why we're more than willing to entertain a parking district here so that you, so that our folks are not parking on Hillside.
So then how many spaces would that limit, you guys?
It's sixty-four, well, no, so it's the same number. We haven't, we haven't counted, we haven't counted anything, so...
So, so what Charlie's saying is that if we implemented a parking district for our residents, it would just be Crest Avenue and eleven spaces in front of Hill.
I think that, I think that...
But that takes parking spaces away from the neighborhood, though. So if anyone, like on a night of a snow emergency, when you can't park on Broadway, and everybody comes up to park on the hill, they won't be able to park there either.
But they're parking there, but they're parking there now. The residents, the residents of it, they're now, and they're parking there now, right? I mean, the good news is we're actually creating parking here so that some of these residents actually get all the street, and on here, we're actually getting more off-site, off-site parking.
No, I'm talking other residents of the neighborhood. This has now changed this parking for residents in the neighborhood. They don't have access to this anymore.
To the blue area.
And we've taken all these parking spaces.
So that's the balance, right? If, if, I mean, like, if they want access to it, then they would have access to this, so it's like...
Wait, but they'll also be providing a parking for the residents.
And we are, we are providing. So in these counts, we're up to, we're up to even a point eight ratio, which is more than sufficient for housing and population than we...
One car per...
Not everyone's going to have, this is affordable housing, not everybody has cars.
But it's not even one car per...
Not even one car per person.
So there are a number of residents that don't have cars, choose not to.
Right now, they're...
Choose the transportation currently from home and plan to use the transportation that we do.
But the dynamic of this project is going to change dramatically, because you guys, like, right now it's dormitories. It's not apartments, it's not beautiful places with, you know, Boston views that all these other veterans are going to want to now come to. Like, other residents from the area that are going to put in if there's a spot open. And those are the people that are, you know, they're going to be able to eat on their own, they're going to be able to, they're going to be able to afford to buy electricity. Yes, these people are going to be, you know, most likely have vehicles. And if they're not in a one-to-one ratio, it doesn't seem like it's going to work for the neighborhood. I think that more parking needs to be added.
I'm going to come back to our experience as a management company, is that this won't be enough for that population.
You don't have anything in Chelsea. You don't have any projects in Chelsea that...
We manage, we manage major urban cities all over, we manage...
Like you said, Boston, but not if we had a...
We manage in Auburn, Massachusetts, we manage in Orleans. Right, and even there, this is enough parking, so like...
But this is the inner-city right next to Boston, so people drive in more. It's just not sufficient. I, I'm telling you guys, there, everybody on this street has more than one car.
So the other thing I would say is like, you know, if we could put more parking, we would. This is an existing, this short...
You can, you know, scale back some of the units, you can add to the parking deck, you know, move in.
Yeah, but yeah, but the thing is, we're adding spaces, we're adding spaces for parking spaces.
Yeah, for, like, we don't want to take away parking for the neighborhood, but the thing is, like, we don't want to take away units for cars. Like, it's, people need to live, and like, we don't want to take away where someone can live or power.
No, but they can park. So you're going to congest the entire neighborhood with people going to all your...
But this is like the market dynamic, it's like people are going to choose here if they, if they don't need a car or whatever, it's like, that, that, like this is...
No, because they're parking, they're not subject to the ordinance for the parking pass, so they can get a parking pass and park on Will or and park on Eleanor, and they won't mind walking up to, you know, their apartment.
Except, as I said, if they create a parking district, the car will be registered in that district and tied to parking in that district. You know, for example, I live down on the waterfront, if I had a car, you know, if it were specifically tied to that district, I wouldn't be able to park up in this, in your neighborhood.
Yeah, she would be able to park on Hillside that.
Yeah, I mean, so what they're saying is...
I was against that, that proposal, I like that proposal, the blue area being, you know, a district for just those residents, because it's overflowing to everybody else's life.
But I said, that is, that's what they said they have been discussing with the city.
I mean, would you guys be open to having that district and then for emergency snow, like, that be open to the public?
That gets tricky.
Yeah, go to Seattle. I got a question. If, since East Parcel's a new building, have you guys thought about situating it, because it's such a long line? Have you guys thought about situating it a little bit more to make it, or put a corner to it? I understand, you know, I'm sure the district will say it.
And that's why we're stepping it.
No, I understand, but have you also thought about putting it so that the end, that you could put an entrance? I have, of course, a little bit of parking there, and we're all talking about parking. But, but, but since it's such a linear street, you can't really change the street itself, you can't make it, like, crazy, but that's the only, only that's kind of new. That what if you shift it so that it's a little bit less linear and more curved?
Curved is going to be very... Curved is going to be very hard to...
Well, yeah, well, I, no, yeah, I understand. Or, or the street, or... No, you shift the building so that it would be...
Proper turn.
No, I understand where, I understand.
I, I don't want to move it closer to the hillside.
No, I want you, I want you to move it this way.
If, that there is no...
I want, I, I was thinking that since that's one of the only new buildings here, guys are building.
Yeah.
If we, if you change it so that it would break up the linear line.
You could follow that.
I understand, but because you seem to have the most space there, and so, right? So it's, I just thought it might be an interesting way to change the pattern of the building so that you wouldn't have such a long line, so that you could either...
Believe it or not, Sergeant Trump, the visitor or not, is the historic commission guiding us to be in line with the, the south side of Crest Avenue? And step it down and scale, and create this indentation, like those gaps here, that's the ones here, just being in line with the area of this place.
And just because that's why historic commission, you mean Mass historic commission? And not Chelsea, or...
Yes, 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 so she found that project.
Because they are providing tax credits to the, the store tax credits to the...
The Massachusetts historic commission.
I have a question about with the new structures. You're showing them in lighter, presumably lighter colored building materials. That is the intention, that they will not be, you know, they won't blend with the existing structures.
They will not match. We don't want, if, if the intent is not, is them to work with the historic buildings, but not to be a copy of the historic. So they, they are, they stand out as the new building on the park. That's the, that's the guidelines of the Massachusetts historic.
Just guidelines that they complement without...
So right now, we, we don't, we didn't study in detail what is the specific material that's going to come into these spaces. And that, that's for, this is also for people to read, who they understand what's new, what's old.
That, I wasn't sure if that is what is going, okay.
One last clarifying question. The townhouses, those are also for veterans exclusively who are... So it's geared towards veterans, families. Because I just noticed that there are basically two parking spaces for each townhouse, so everybody over there is getting a parking space, correct?
There are four release, but there are...
Eighteen in one, thirteen in front.
It's one to one.
It's one to one.
It's one to one.
Well, there's thirteen in front, right?
There's three parking.
Yeah, so thirteen in front, eighteen in back, so you're closing the walls to...
I guess, like, the last point about the one-way street, like, I don't live in this neighborhood, so I can't speak honestly on behalf of the traffic. And like, my experience, traffic studies are kind of just much bogus. Like, it's also just like paid crap.
Thank you for saying that.
Just like working with some of the neighbors here who, like, know the flows and like, which routes people go, like, that's going to be the best option. Like, I, to me, like, I don't know the best option, so I can't recommend, but it seems like there's a lot of opposition from the public on that view of it.
Yeah, I think it's all about what the, the right balance, like Jamie was saying, and whether it's kind of prioritizing the thoroughfare or prioritizing the slow congestion experience, and that is all that matters, so, that is... Yeah, I don't know, I'm just...
I really appreciate, I just want to, we have a lot of, this has been a robust discussion, and I appreciate all of the effort. That's fun, that's why I think all of us appreciate the veterans and want more housing for veterans that they're happy to be living in personally. I just want to say that that park, that the east parcel, it's, it's great that it's going to be housing for veterans. It's really sad that it's the last green space there with a view of the water, where a lot of people can be, everybody in the neighborhood walks their dogs there, hangs out with veterans, the landscaper. If any of that could be retained in that little corner there, I think it would be used. Like, that's how ladies in other communities...
Yeah, so, I mean, you're absolutely right, you know. Oh, I was trying to put a premium on, you know, what was basically all that. Because the site is so constrained from a historic perspective, and we're trying to get to the in-account that we need for the veterans, that is the place where we were able with the historic folks we're dealing with. So we totally get it, and we totally understand that. We are trying to create still an area of friendly, of agreement. But again, it comes to the, you know, to serve the residents to get to that, that, that's the units. There aren't, there are a lot of, I know that's a lot of boos that we can make. I mean, we did explore some different things, adding one here, to that, historic commission, you know. What do you have?
Yeah, we go back to RFP of what we proposed. We actually proposed green space there. And when we talked to the historic commission, because we proposed additions here, they actually said that they didn't want to see anything there, and they actually pushed us to put a building there. And Charlie fought back for a long time, he was really upset. So it was balancing, like, creating the units for the veterans and what historic commission, the National Park Service and Mass Historic Resources do. And we were very surprised that they actually pushed us to do that, because I think they liked the symmetry of, of big building there, and it's still, and it's going to be there. So I, I just remember you being upset about this.
I, I, I mean, fully disclosure, I wanted to, this is the least interesting of the historic buildings, and we really wanted to knock, to knock this down and build three or four stories.
Instead of saying parcel, they did not... Did you know that so you can't, like, not make that?
The cafe, like the, the retail space, do you guys have, like, somebody like in mind?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the cafe is, is kind of really just a concept and idea, like, you know, one of these, there are lots of different pieces that we're trying to accomplish. And one of the things I thought would be really cool is how do you, you know, for the veterans there, how do you create a veteran-owned business?
And then those are the next.
So, so, so we created this space, it's actually not that big, the idea isn't like, hopefully when we're all done, that there'll be a group there of veterans that would want to, you know, do this, just, you know, random idea. There's a guy I happen to know who does coffee, works for Pete's Coffee, and he brought them out here and he does the coffee for our building, you notice he's on the cover. So I've actually had conversations with him, like, would you be interested in coming and try to work with the veterans and create like a coffee business here? So I mean, that's sort of after all this is kind of done.
No, I just didn't know if it's going to be like just open to the public for anybody to be like, oh, the donuts now must be coming in.
That's not, that's not the concept.
Well, I know that the donuts wouldn't come there, but I'm just saying, like, is anybody, is it, or is it, because this is a affordable, like, complex, is it going to be an affordable retail space?
So all, all it is, what I just told you in terms of how we're thinking and planning for it, so that's like, we haven't, we haven't got anything beyond that, we're really focusing on the buildings and so.
And we're not a super organic top dollar.
Yeah, it's not.
So it's going to be something that's more of a place meeting exercise. And I think the comment about other things I would consider, that I, it makes me remind me, the last week over at the Town Hall, there was a veteran that I had met, I was like, well, maybe this could be a place where they can perform. So I think the cafe idea that our initial, like I told them, we're exploring that still, but the idea of maybe other spaces, this could be, that could work well with that plaza could definitely be.
Maybe something that they can utilize for a food stall, because I think that taking away the kitchen and on that surface of them being able to go down to the cafeteria, I think that's going to be a change for them.
So we've had lots of conversations with them, with every single individual resident on, and we're getting to, we're meeting with our team, with our soldier on team, with our ancient Christian, you know, full taking, every, every single one we can have, and that would solve for the ones that aren't willing to show up or if they're not going to work or, 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 to take on that. One of the things we've experienced through that process, it's actually been quite refreshing, is that a lot of veterans are like, you know, I actually would like to come, I would like to have my own kitchen, I would like to do that, and they're not afraid of that. So one of the things that we showed was that if you put in the, in the, in the resource center, there is an area that we call kind of the kitchen, right? And so one of the concepts here is that you would have cooking classes for these, for the veterans, to teach them how to cook and they're going to do that. We're also made to know that we're going to put in really big microwaves in all of these units because, you know, at the end of the day, maybe they don't want to cook, get a big microwave, you know, I use a microwave, so, you know.
Could you tie that into some sort of food pantry space?
Yeah, so one of.
With refrigeration as well as storage.
Yeah, so, so we can get, I mean, Soldier's Home is our partner, actually has a, has a, has a kitchen now, is that my, so we're Western, Agawang, thank you, thank you, you remember, has, has that in Agawang, and they actually prepare meals every day, they'll be delivering one meal a day to, there will be one meal a day for the, for the, for the veterans, so it's not like they're quite from, from three to zero. And so, those get transported out of the, those get done. In terms of food pantry, one of the things we did actually on the project, we're working with the Shaker and High Park Pride, which is a historic building, is one of the things that COVID kind of taught us, that we have lots of space because these are historic buildings, we're going to have lots of goods and frannies. And one of the things there, we created a pantry, basically that would stock with dry goods and things like that, that the residents can basically buy at cost, no markup. So in the end, that there's another COVID epidemic or something and people are stuck in inside, you know, they have access to buying paper towels and toilet paper and, you know, toothpaste and, you know, mustard and ketchup and those kinds of things, right? So it's a great idea, perfect idea, that's I'm sure we'll be able to find in all these little, it's a great association, someplace, not more than one place, but that stuff, so yeah, we, we designed. So our challenge is to come back here and get you the longest live.
For our future conversations, I would appreciate some kind of illustration of all the parking added on. It's attractive because that doesn't totally.
So it's, it's very far, it looks like this is, this parking space is part of the market and so it's like, it's.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, we can, because we're reporting with our best guess, you know. I mean, there's other small things we can do, if people give you the right speed, like, you know, you go back to having the John on Hillside, right? So I mean, like, you know, we'll look, we'll look, we'll look at things at the side, we'll put a park with that and stuff, and something a little bit better. But the other thing that we can, that we can do, yeah, so. So, so we see these little, like, markers, they're not there yet, right? We're going to have little markers on that, right? So we all know people with those little markers, you know, you can get, you can get, you can get five, five spaces.
That's actually the intent. Or at least, I mean, as explained by our former city manager, because there are people who have asked at different community meetings for parking spaces to be marked out on the streets. And our previous city manager, his argument always was, that will eliminate spaces. If you mark out a parking spot on the street, you, because you have to make, you have, they have to be of a size that can accommodate the largest passenger vehicle.
Yeah, if you go to like some of the pictures, you guys took all of the people on Hillside and parked like back to back, like Parlo's, parallel park, we did not, yeah.
So it's not a good idea, but one thing I'm saying is if we actually marked space, maybe there's actually more that could park there than not, but I see your point that maybe, maybe they can.
I think, you know, it's, it's one of those, like, there, it's six of one, half dozen of another, really.
Yeah. If they're ready, we can make the parking, you know, there's certain areas, so it's going to be a little issue, and that's what we'll do.
And come up one evening to see what the parking's like at night as opposed to during the day, because it's a very different.
Take a picture.
All very nice, no storm.
To be honest, quite a, just like the national constraint to, especially this part of Hillside, I don't think you can provide two lanes of traffic in two sides of the parking and the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, we don't want the sidewalk, they'll just leave it the way that it is because I think that's what's working the best.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to.
If there are any additional questions.
Well, may or any sentence?
I'll second that.
On favor, as.
Thank you.